February 3, 2015, and I will just tell you right up front, we are using some new electronic equipment tonight, so there might be an extra pause or a repeat of one thing or another.
Yeah.
So, are we?
We're ready.
We're ready to go.
Yeah.
Great. Total success so far. So, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask for our first big moment. Roll call.
Roll call. Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Mueller.
Here.
Councilmember Dornbecker.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chilton.
Here.
Mayor Dunbar.
Here. If you don't, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is to fly at the United States of America and to the Republic of America's hands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up, adoption of tonight's agenda, and I believe we're going to still do that by the old verbal vote, so is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
And do...
That was fast.
Yeah. That was Dornbecker seconded Hall.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you unanimously. We're going to move right ahead to some fun stuff. We have a couple of proclamations tonight, and we're very honored to have some special representatives with us tonight. We are going to start off, because this is continuing our at least year-long, if not longer, celebration of the incorporation of the town of Yountville, and tomorrow being our 50th, official 50th anniversary of incorporation. The first special guest we have with us tonight is Edith Gonzalez, who is representing Congressman Mike Thompson's office and the congressman himself with a special congressional resolution. Welcome, Edith.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Good evening, actually. It is truly a great honor and a pleasure to be here with you all today. I will be reading part of a congressional record that Congressman Thompson will be reading on the House floor tomorrow. Congressional Record, House of Representatives, February 4, 2015, Remarks of Representative Mike Thompson Honoring the Town of Yountville. Mr. Speaker, I rise today to honor the town of Yountville, California, on the 50th anniversary of its incorporation. The town of Yountville has developed a reputation for culinary excellence, distinguished lodging, fine wines, and renowned retail businesses, which is especially impressive considering that the town has less than 3,000 residents. On February 4, 1965, the city of Yountville was officially incorporated, and in 1982 changed its name of Town of Yountville. Over the past 50 years, the town has grown to almost 3,000 residents. Today, the town is home to many award-winning restaurants, such as the French Laundry, which boasts a three-star Michelin rating, and which contributes to the town's reputation as a culinary capital of Napa Valley. Mr. Speaker and colleagues, it is my distinct pleasure to recognize the town of Yountville, California, on the 50th anniversary of its incorporation. Yountville is a treasured part of our Napa Valley, and I look forward to seeing the town continue to prosper over the next 50 years. Signed, Congressman Mike Thompson.
Great. And I'll actually come down and get that for you. Why not? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Let's see. Which way should I go, PJ? There it is. Thank you very much. Here, I'll let you take a look at that while I move on to our next special guest. We also have a special joint resolution coming from us on behalf of our Senator Lois Wolk and Assemblymember Bill Dodd, and we have Tracy Crumpin from Senator Wolk's office and Tom Barti from Assemblymember Dodd's office to make this presentation.
Council and mayor, it's good evening. It's really a pleasure to be here. This is really a lot of fun when I've had the opportunity to work with so many of you, both in this capacity and another capacity. I've used to work with Richard in my previous life as an insurance agent, and I've known Dear Merida forever, so this is like a lot of fun for me. It's, and actually just driving up here this evening, thinking about how fortunate we are to live in just such an amazing community, and the residents of Yountville are so fortunate to have each and every one of you, as well as staff, working every day on behalf of this great town. There's this one portion, I won't read all the whereas's, because you can read those in your own time, but there's this one area, this one clause that just really stuck out for me, and it says, "Whereas, one of California's most attractive and distinguished communities, the town of Yountville is a community built on hard work and determination of a population that is justly proud to be known as the heart of the Napa Valley." Congratulations so much on your 50th anniversary. That's awesome. Keep it up.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I will say that every time that the senator is in Napa County, we do actually slice out a time that she can come up to Bouchon.
Yes.
That's, it is, that's, that's, that's one of her places.
Much appreciated.
Of course. I'll turn it over to Tom.
Thank you and good evening. It's great to be here on behalf of Assemblymember Dodd. I can't really build much on what was already said in the congressional record or Tracy's comments, but I will complete the last line of the resolution. Resolved by Senator Lois Wolk and Assemblymember Bill Dodd that they take great pleasure in congratulating the town of Yountville on the 50th anniversary of its incorporation, applaud it for the outstanding contributions it has made to the history of California, and extend best wishes for its continued growth and prosperity in the years to come. Lois Wolk, Honorable Senator from 3rd District, and the Honorable Bill Dodd, 4th Assembly District, so congratulations. And I'm sure size isn't necessarily what matters in this case, right?
There you go, John. There you go. Thank you.
I think I might have to leave these over here.
Nice. Very nice.
We'll put your next week, so we can see that you're probably asleep.
We don't have any space.
We're going to interfere with our blank wall.
I was, I was going to make a comment. We do have some newly refurbished bare walls, so we, we have something to start with. Absolutely. Thank you very much, and please pass on our appreciation to the Congressman, Senator Wolk, and Assemblymember Dodd for the recognition. We very much appreciate that. And I, and thank you for being here tonight. I know that we are getting Edith doing some double duty tonight, and we have one more recognition that I'm particularly proud of, so if you would come back to the podium, and I invite Robin Dunbar, my wife, to, to join you.
So, hello. Mrs. Dunbar. It is my pleasure to present Mrs. Robin Dunbar with a certificate of special congressional recognition on behalf of being recognized as a Community Service Award Honoree for 2015 Yountville Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you so much.
That's for you.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to recognize that Lois Wolk, a longtime resident and our out-and-about columnist, was also...
Lois Riker.
Lois Wolk? Lois Riker. Lois Riker was recognized as the Citizen of the Year also by the Chamber of Commerce, so congratulations to Lois Riker. I'm sure Senator Wolk has deserved Citizen of the Year recognition somewhere. In Davis?
In my heart, yes.
Right. Well, thank you very much. There are two more special recognitions I would just like to acknowledge. We had the distinct pleasure just a few nights ago to see some of our staff and the overall team recognized. You know, it's often that you'll hear us thank our staff directly, but this is a recognition received by the Yountville Chamber of Commerce and Welcome Center, given to this particular plaque presented to the Town of Yountville, Yountville Public Works Department. This recognition award is presented as a token of our appreciation for your contributions toward the beautification of the town of Yountville. And we had, I think, pretty much our whole crew there to receive that, which is also great, they could be there and take part in that. And a similar recognition from the Chamber of Commerce presented to the entire town of Yountville. This recognition award is presented as a token of our appreciation for your contributions toward the sustainability and beautification of the town of Yountville. So, again, on behalf of the whole council and the staff, in particular the Public Works Department, we thank the Chamber of Commerce for recognizing the hard work that goes into keeping this town beautiful each and every day. So, thank you all very much for that. I think I might be out of awards to recognize, but I think we are getting into the public comment section of our meeting, so I'll invite any members of the public, and again, thank you very much for being here.
We're fully double meeting time.
Understandable.
Thank you.
Good night. So, I invite any members of the public that are here tonight to speak to the council on something not on tonight's agenda, and I believe we might have at least one. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Chuck Niedhofer. I live on Mesa Court. I apologize for my voice. This just happened this morning. I want to echo the, the last speaker in thanking all of you for your service to our town. I'm an infrequent visitor to this meeting, but a frequent reader of the news, and, and have enjoyed keeping up and seeing and, and enjoying myself the results of all of your hard work, so thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to come and talk tonight about the, the billing policy for the utility bills, for the water bills of the town, and I want to thank staff for clarifying in the last water bill, you know, in black and white exactly what the billing policy is. I think this first, second, third, fourth step kind of approach makes it very clear. I'd like to ask, and I, and I also recognize that this represents the, a certain point in a larger process that the town has adopted in terms of computerizing its billing and making things more efficient, and I appreciate that. I want to encourage us, however, to look at this one more time. It feels as if a utility bill that's due 20 days after it's sent feels heavy-handed. I don't, I pay many bills every month, and only one or two of them are due after 20 days, and there are things like second mortgages and things where people are trying to make a lot of money off me. It, it strikes me that a utility service is not one of those things. It's not a, it's not a food box from a farmer, a newspaper from a, from a printing company. It's, it's something that people need to live, and, and the way the policy exists right now, after 38 days, one's, one's, one's water could be shut off. So, I just wanted to make the request that we, as a, as a town, revisit this. I've already had constructive conversations with staff, and they've given me some ideas for how to approach it personally, and I think I've given them ideas for how to clarify the policy and, and maybe make it work for everybody, but it, it still feels, as I said earlier, a bit aggressive to expect full payment after 21 days, so it's possible to pay a bill every month and still pay a late fee, you know, if one pays the same time every month, for example. So, so that's it. I know that you don't need to respond, and, and I don't come with a, with necessarily a, a solution, but I'm willing to continue to work to find something that, that's more reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here, and as you're aware, we're not allowed to discuss it, but I appreciate the fact that you've already opened the dialogue with staff. I was kind of hoping you would speak for another two and a half minutes, because I don't know what happens when the timer goes to zero.
I was going to increase it by 30-second increments.
Oh, okay. We're going to have to wait and find that out. Yeah. I'm not sure your voice could even last that two, two and a half more minutes, so I don't want to press it. Any other public comment tonight? Seeing no other, we'll move on ahead to the consent calendar, and this might be when the fun begins.
Uh-huh.
So, we are going to try to institute our new vote casting system, which is an electronic voting system. It also requires, this is the part that I really enjoy, any council member wishing to speak has to push a button, and I have to recognize that person.
So, is it activated?
So, is everyone on Item 7, Consent Calendar? And you have a button that says Request to Speak?
Yep.
Please turn that button off? No, I'm just kidding. So, we do have the consent calendar as presented before us. Are there any changes or corrections or any items to be pulled off the consent calendar? Seeing none? We were hoping for something to happen there. We will move ahead to voting, and Michelle, I think, do you have to...
You guys can hit Motion and Second.
It's not lit anymore. It went away.
We did. You did?
Oh, that's why it went away.
Okay.
So, so we have a motion and a second. I don't see...
Remember a motion and a second, and maybe I'm asleep, but I, I just don't recall that.
Pushing the buttons.
It's right there.
Well, oh, okay. I think, and just out of, and it's a caution, because for ADA purposes, I think it's always prudent to, at lea, even though it's posted up on our screen, folks at home may see it, but if somebody at home is not able to see the screen for whatever reasons, that maybe we can have that read. So, can we, can we undo that and redo it just for practice?
You can go ahead and say Moved and Seconded.
But I, I would like to undo that, and just so we can kind of run through...
Let's not undo it.
We can't undo it.
Yeah.
We're not going to try that. All right, so, never mind. So, there is a motion by Councilmember Dornbecker, seconded by Vice Mayor Chilton. Any discussion? There's no button for discussion.
Request to speak.
Oh, yeah. Request to speak. Did you want to?
You didn't hit the button, and you spoke.
All in favor? No?
We'll start the voting.
Oh, look at that.
Okay, now your screen, and you pick what you would like.
I'm going to hit yes, since I'm supposed to speak.
Are you still going to...
And, and on my screen, I can see that you've all selected your items, so I'm going to stop the voting, and I'm going to record.
So, the color on my screen did not change to green, but you got the vote.
I don't know if it's supposed to, but yeah, we have it there. I'm good.
Then how do, how do we do an ADA so that everybody knows what was...
What will need to be done then at this point is the mayor can announce that motion passed unanimously.
The motion passed unanimously.
And then if there was, for some reason, a vote of 4-1, 3-2 of some sort, then we would need to announce that vote and who voted in support or opposition.
Similar to what you do on all your other items, Motion and a Second.
Right. But basically, any non-unanimous vote will, will basically become almost a roll call vote.
Correct.
Modified roll call vote.
Yes.
Just to identify any dissent.
What I would say actually is you're reporting and sharing rather than it being a roll call, because it will have all been, you all voted at the same time.
Right.
It's just a reporting out, if you will, of what the vote outcome was.
We won't need to do roll call individually stated. It'll show it up there, and you can reflect what's showing on the screen.
I rescind my, my most, my mention of roll call voting.
We will work out the...
Well, this is roll call voting, basically, right?
So, I have another question, since we're...
Did you push your Request to Speak button?
No one else did, but I will Request to Speak.
I want to see what happens on my screen.
I did. I pushed it. I agree.
I'm, I'm not seeing any speakers come up here, so I am not granting anyone the microphone.
I hit the button, and I can withdraw it, but right now it's done.
No, I want to, I don't know if there's a delay.
Probably because we're not on an item any longer.
I withdraw my request.
You'll withdraw your request?
Okay.
It does say the current item is Consent Calendar.
Can we talk anyway?
It doesn't say you're allowed to talk. Councilmember Mueller?
I think I forgot what I was going to ask, but, okay, so I just have a question. If, like, we all voted on the consent calendar.
Yes.
And are we allowed to kind of see, will it come up if only four of us vote?
Absolutely. It will, it'll display 4-1, 2-2. It'll say if it passes, it fails, and all of that will be reflected on the screen.
But, no, if, what if I want to, like, see, you know, sometimes we get to hear, I think I'm going to vote yes, and I'm going to vote no. We, it won't, we can't see what everyone does until it's all done, all five of us?
And that's kind of the point of it, that...
Oh.
It's supposed to be your decision based on...
That's the point of it, okay.
Based on the evidence presented.
All right.
And, yes, so there may be a surprise of, of vote that we're not sure. If we have a discussion that's unsettled, you don't know which direction it's going to go?
Town Attorney.
Yes. I was going to say I'm wrong.
For, no, I agree with all that. The, in the, let's say there was a separate item to be considered. Once the motion, once a motion is made and a second is, is made, then it's time for discussion, so that discussion can take place. Doesn't prohibit a council member from articulating their support or opposition to that motion, but at the point in time then when the, the vote is taken, it's all taken at one simultaneous time.
That exists.
Correct.
Person number five doesn't hit their button, nothing will show up on the screen.
So, I, you, the council members initiate the motion and the second, then the mayor will ask for discussion like normal, and then when you concluded your discussion, he can direct me, "Start Voting," or "All, No" to start voting, and I, I click that on my screen, and then that's when the vote pad appears on your screen, the eyes, nose, or abstain.
But, but we, nor the public, seize the vote until all five votes are in.
Right. Once I see it on my screen that everyone's voted, then I stop, stop the voting, and then I record it, and when I hit Record, that's when it appears on the screen, like it did for Consent.
Because you would say, "Vice Mayor Chilton, you need to record a vote."
Right. Exactly. If the box wasn't checked.
Councilmember Dornbecker.
All right, so my question is, however, when we made the motion and the second, Louis and I, that did not show up. It showed up on your screen. Did it not show up on your screen?
No.
It didn't show up on our screen.
It took away my ability to make a motion or a second.
Oh, that's what...
Because someone had already done it.
All of a sudden, it just went gray.
Yeah, that's why.
And I didn't know why. I did.
Now you do, because that means...
Watch the video.
Mayor, did it show, did you notice if it showed on your screen?
The buttons did go gray, so I'm...
And did you see the...
I did not see any recognition that...
When that, when that voting screen popped up on your iPad, I think it should show the mover and seconder on that screen.
That took several seconds to pop up.
Oh, did it? Okay. Good to know.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it did show up. It just wasn't immediate after a, the motion is seconded, obviously, so that we could have discussion, but then did you...
That could be my delay in recording, so I record it. I hit Record, and that generated it.
That's when it pops up.
So, maybe that, yeah. So, for example, when we did adoption of the agenda, that's not a feature that had the vote, so I had to manually input the motion and the second, and as you saw, when it looked like it failed, it's because I didn't check all your boxes saying that all of you voted yes on that item, so I went back and corrected that. So, I had to check those boxes, because we can manually, I can manually do that as well as you pushing, pushing your iPad.
Well, I trust you.
Okay, I'm glad.
So, we made it through a consent calendar vote.
Glad it was a short meeting for this.
Vice Mayor?
I guess going back to the, to the point of the town attorney, I recognized, did you ever ask for a motion?
I did.
Yes, you did.
Did you ask for a, a motion to approve?
I said, is there...
Motion.
Any discussion, anything to be pulled or a motion?
And, but you hit Motion, but we never said what the motion was for. I seconded your motion without actually knowing what you were motioning. You could have been voting against everything.
So, that's, that was what...
That's true.
We were informed that you have to have a verbal as well as the electronic vote when you're motioning and seconding.
But we should probably wait...
Until I finish...
Well, first of all, we shouldn't do a motion until, until you say, whoever's running the meeting says, "Can I have a motion?" Or was someone like to make a motion? And then we shouldn't second a motion. We haven't heard the person say what they're motioning.
Typically, what I would say is...
Just a motion to approve Consent Calendar.
Exactly. That's what I would typically say.
Right. Know what we're...
I thought you had...
Vice Mayor Chilton thinks this is a video game. It's impressive.
I think Councilmember Dornbecker just wanted to be the very first person ever to record a motion electronically.
I understood what was going on.
She, she also watched the video.
I watched the video.
Any other discussion about a unanimous vote on the consent calendar that has already happened? No. Moving forward to our presentations.
Okay.
The first presentation is my State of the Town address, so if you will indulge me for just a few minutes. As we look forward this year to celebrating the 50th anniversary of Yountville's incorporation, it's a good time to, to review not only what happened in 2014, but also some of the history that brought us to this point. The footprint of Yountville has changed very little since the early pioneer days of George Yount. Since incorporation in February 1965, the town limited... Since incorporation in February 1965, the town limits have remained basically the same, but the character of our community has evolved significantly since those first years, when our community was known as the city of Yountville. The town's population has shifted a bit over time. U.S. Census records listed Yountville with 2,332 in the early 1970s. The most recent count has us with 2,933 residents. A consistent one-third of our population has lived at the 130-year-old California Veterans Home. In 1980, a petition to change the name from city to town was submitted as an attempt to better reflect the values of our community. And in 1982, the name officially became the town of Yountville. Yountville Community Hall, built in the mid-1920s as a meeting place and dance hall, was remodeled in 2009 as part of the Yountville Community Center project. That development, a decade in the making, created a true public town center and included a new multipurpose facility, expanded library, art room, plaza, outdoor event space, parking lot, and Napa County Sheriff's substation. More recently, the town's former schoolhouse and current town hall received a long-discussed seismic upgrade last year, just five months before a major earthquake hit that could have turned this unreinforced building into rubble. Most accounts of the early years of incorporation describe Yountville as little more than bars and taxicabs that provided what I'll call social recreation for members of the Veterans Home, since the town was just outside the alcohol-prohibited zone around the home grounds. Town leaders at that time, however, had the vision to embrace our location in the heart of the growing Napa Valley wine country as a visitor destination. That became the cornerstone of our modern economy. Balancing that decision was a grassroots attitude with locals that continues today to maintain a warm, friendly, small-town charm in Yountville. What does that combination look like today? From a business perspective, it's being home to one of the world's most celebrated restaurants, the French Laundry, operated from 1978 to 1994 by Don and Sally Schmidt, and run for the last 20 years by Chef Thomas Keller, universally recognized as one of the top chefs around the globe. It's earning the title culinary capital of the Napa Valley based on the numerous Michelin stars and other accolades bestowed upon our unparalleled roster of restaurants. It's having premier lodging properties, award-winning wine, premium retail shops, and public art that offer memorable experiences for visitors and residents alike. It's also embracing our pioneer roots by maintaining our old-town neighborhoods, protecting historical artifacts, and continuing to share and preserve generations of stories. And it's the generosity of local residents and business owners who care for each other in the aftermath of a natural disaster, who support nonprofits and community projects, and who volunteer every day to make a difference. More specifically, how has our community evolved just this past year? We rebuilt two major streets, Madison and Yount Streets, adding sidewalks and new infrastructure to replace pipelines built decades ago. PG&E is completing a similar reconstruction of the main gas line along Washington Street right now. We also broke ground on a $3.4 million expansion of our recycled water system that will enable the town to reuse up to 100% of its treated wastewater by selling to more neighbor wineries for irrigation and thus protecting critical groundwater supplies. We continue to partner with the local administration of the Veterans Home and the California Department of Veterans Affairs leadership on how best to serve our current and future generations of veterans. Our impressive list of accomplishments does not alone mark our last 12 months. We are closing the books on lengthy and costly legal challenges to complete construction defect repairs to our community center buildings. We continue to dialogue with PG&E on ways to avoid recurring power outages that impact many of our residents. We also remain in a statewide drought emergency that restricts water use by businesses and homeowners. Looking ahead to 2015, we will celebrate 50 years of incorporation of the town in classic Yountville style, with recognition of the founding members of our community, with dedications of pieces of our history, and with public gatherings much like those held nearly a century ago in our community hall. And yes, those activities will include amazing food and wine. Most importantly, we will celebrate with our friends and our neighbors. The task to continue this legacy falls to all of us. Together, we begin to write the next 50 years of history here in Yountville. Thank you. Thank you for indulging me. That's the state of our town as I see it. Up next, we have an update of our Napa County Regional Parks and Open Space District Advisory Committee, and we welcome our representative, Sandy Fakin. And I just have a feeling we might need to adjust that microphone height just a touch.
Good. I won't take much of your time, but I did want to have an opportunity to talk with you for just a few minutes to report out on what the advisory committee's been doing since my appointment to the committee late last summer. I've been in intermittent email contact with Steve Rogers. We agreed that as things would come up, that you might need to have immediate information on, that he would then be the conduit for that. But since we're about halfway into the project now, since things began in essentially September and are due to conclude in June, this is about halfway, and I figured it was a good time to talk to you very briefly and let you know I did submit a memorandum to you, and I won't go over that with you, but it's sort of a timeline of what we've been doing, what we've been doing in the last five months or so in our meetings, including an interesting sort of field trip out to a number of the project sites, including the Yountville Wildlife Refuge, off of the crossroads. It's, that's an interesting, it was an interesting time for me. I didn't realize a couple of things. One is that there's a, I didn't, you probably are well aware of this. I'm, this is a learning curve that's amazing and has been really wonderful. But we have 40 acres east of the river that are part of the refuge. They're just inaccessible at the time, but now we're working on that, so hopefully that eventually will be accessible to the general public, be able to access that other 40 acres. But there were some concerns that came up, and then the district will be dealing with those as they come up. For example, during the warmer weather, folks tend to go into the refuge area, the, just on the other side of the parking where the river is, and to set up small dams to have then swimming holes. Well, that obviously impedes the flow of the fish being able to move through the river and that sort of thing. So there are some challenges in working with that, but the thing that was encouraging to me was that the district is on it and understands that there have been some challenges, and they'll be working on that, including upgrading some of the signage there, the restroom facilities, and so on and so forth. So I appreciate that. Clearly, clearly, Yountville is in their sights. So it's been very interesting. Our commission as a, as a committee is to review and comment ultimately on the open space district's plans, what they've been doing, what their priorities are, what their financing strategies are, and to determine whether there are needs, they need to go forward as planned, or whether there may be a need to do some tweaking and changing and readapting. So we'll be working on that beginning in March. We've done all of, this will be the last of our educational meetings, informational meetings that we're given, and then we will begin the writing process, the synthesization of all the information in March, and hopefully conclude in June. And then I'll be able to come back and talk with you a little more at that point. But it has been a really interesting opportunity for me. The representatives committee, there are probably 15 of us or so, represent all the municipalities essentially in the area, as well as individual commission and board appointments and these sorts of things, coming from other, other facilities. But it's, so it's a great cross-section. There are attorneys, there are business people, nonprofit administrators, those kinds of things. So it's been really, really great. Couple of things I did want to just mention to you in passing. This, the regional parks and open space district has been operating for eight years now, and has gotten a lot done in those eight years. But this is the first time they pulled the community together to give some oversight, and we appreciate being included in that. During 2014, the district was able to assemble 8,460 hours of volunteer service. That's trail maintenance and all that sort of thing, which translates into money, as we all know. Something the area of $170,000 worth of time and in-kind service, which is, which is excellent, which we're gonna have to do to be able to meet some of the maintenance needs of these various projects. Couple of things that are coming up, just as information for all of us, that the district has submitted an application and, which should be fulfilled by July to assume responsibility for Robert Louis Stevenson State Park. That's gonna be a big undertaking, with 5,272 acres, I believe, of property in State Park and Mount St. Helena going up at 40, you know, 4,300 square feet, rather. It's gonna be interesting. So that should happen in July, and so the district will take that over. That's a major project. One of the other projects that I thought was particularly interesting is the purchasing of 411 acres from the Kirkland Ranch in the south part of the area and the trail that's anticipated to be built from Skyline Park to Highway 12 across the mountains. So that's gonna be a real, a real challenge one to do, but also it's gonna be something pretty wonderful for the hiking public. So we look forward to those. Those are major projects. One of the things that we've been looking at and have been acquainted with the last couple of meetings, we've had speakers from the other local districts, other open space districts in the area, from Marin, from Mid Peninsula and so forth, as well as people coming to speak to us from Parks and Rec departments and all that. The fiscal issues that are facing all groups, but particularly and certainly from my perspective at the moment, the district are gonna be significant. They, we've found that the voters historically and increasingly are supportive of funding for improved maintenance of public spaces and environmental education. When I came into this, we had a chance to introduce ourselves at our first meeting, and one of the things that I shared with them from my perspective was that acquiring properties is essential. We've got to protect our open space when we have those opportunities. But equally important to me is the maintenance of those. It's one thing to gut the properties, set up the trails, invite the public to use those, and then have the facilities deteriorate, and we don't, don't want to get into that. So I was very excited to see that maintenance is high on the priority list for, for the district, whether it's trail maintenance, maintenance of restroom facilities, signage, those kinds of things, parking, pardon me, parking facilities, those sorts of things, too. I appreciated that. One of the things that was found out by a number of these other groups that had begun to look around and do focus, focus groups and all that, was that voters want an oversight committee like the one that has been formed here. So I suspect after we've done our work, at least periodically, there'll be a resurgence of citizen oversight of priorities, funding, issues, all those sorts of things. The other thing we're talking about, obviously, were funding concerns which involve cutting costs and increasing user fees, developing public and private partnerships. One of the things that the district has done, and, and one of the reasons for acquiring these properties is to be able to provide some access, a conduit. So we have, we have a property held here, we have a property held here. This is unavailable at the moment. We acquire that property, and now we have egress and access and all those sorts of things. So those are the sorts of things that kind of drive the whole, the whole process here, is access for the public, protecting the facilities for the wildlife, as well as, as for our recreational use. Though, I think one of the final comments I wanted to make that I thought was, was pretty good, because I, being a, you know, someone that has some fiscal, you know, concerns about the, the whole issue of managing funding for these. In Napa County, for every dollar, for every dollar provided by the county to the district, for every dollar, the district has generated $3 worth of other support. Funding, grants, other kinds of monies coming in from the Wildlife Conservancy and those sorts of things. So that's, that's quite a return on the dollar, I think, in terms of the county's support for open space and being able to take those monies and leverage them and be able to triple, really, the, the effect that those, those dollars can have. So I'll continue to go to, represent our interests as a part of a much larger community, and I welcome input from any of you, all of you, and from the general public if there are some, some issues. But I'll be back to talk with you certainly no later than June, when we anticipate finishing in the work, and beforehand if there's a need.
Great, thank you. Any questions to the presentation? Yes, Councilmember Hall?
Hi, thank you for your presentation. So about the Yountville, I forget what it's called now, Wildlife Refuge?
Wildlife Refuge.
Is that managed and run by DFG, Department of Fish and Game? That was always my understanding, was that that was really Department of Fish and Game's property.
Right, at this point, the district now is operating that.
Okay.
And what they've done is, and I think terrifically, is to partner with Fish and Game, partner with BLM, for the land management and so forth. So there's a lot of co, cowork going on. So actually, boots on the ground is really, the district is doing wonderful work down there and through Chris and some other folks. So I think it's really the partnership, but at this point, the district is, is very involved in the refuge.
And with, you had mentioned the 40 acres that are on the east side of the river. The access point, is that gonna be a footbridge, or is it gonna be through the east side? You don't know?
Working on it now. I guess what we found out was that it was, we have this available, but it isn't available. It's not accessible now. So the next plan will be, how do we do that? Do we do it with a bridge? Do we do it with some other sort of device to be able to give folks access to that? Because I understand, really, it's pristine. It's beautiful.
Yeah.
So-
I've actually hiked that. I don't know if it was legal or not, but I won't say that in the public record too many times, but I actually forged the stream back in 96 and was over in that area. It's really, I mean, it's just basically untouched.
Absolutely. And, yeah, and recognizing that, and that there's others, Richard, that would be out there that might very well want to participate, you know, in the hiking in the way that you did as well. That's part of the plan. What I was pleased to see was of the 16 or so projects that the district is working on and has prioritized, out of many, many more than, than the 16, that, that the Yountville, the Wildlife Refuge, was right at the top of the list. That's the first place we stopped on our field trip.
Yeah, well, thank you.
It's pretty cool.
Thanks for the update.
So I want to invite, I believe the Vice Mayor has a comment, but I wanted to recognize, Michelle, he hit his request to speak button, but it did not respond at all on my pad. So I don't know if it's because it's a presentation, we're not in an agenda item. If you could just recognize that that was during this presentation. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I did that merely for technology testing.
All right, then.
There you go.
Any other questions or comments about the report or the presentation, I mean?
I've made a request to speak.
She doesn't know that.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
I just wanted to say thank you so much, Sandy, and the park and open space is such an important element. So thank you for being our person there, our point person.
Absolutely. It's my pleasure, believe me, yeah.
We actually, many of us were up at the Napa County League of Governments meeting up in Calistoga just a few weeks ago, and there were two representatives from the Parks and Open Space District sharing some similar information that you shared tonight. So it's on, it's on the whole county's radar, which is good to see.
It is, it is, and, and obviously, you know, given our, the demographics of the county and whatnot, we have a lot of open space, a lot of rural space that we, that we need to protect, and it's, it's, I think, encouraging that we're all sort of on the same page.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move ahead. We have no public hearings tonight, no administrative items. Do we have any staff informational reports that need recognition? Town manager?
What I would like to remind everybody is that we have a very special occasion tomorrow, and the community is extending our celebration, and tomorrow is the Ashville 50th anniversary, and we welcome everybody to join us at 4:45 PM. We will be recreating a version of the Y shot from several years ago. We will be unveiling a historic artifact, and more importantly, as you've already alluded to in the state of the town address, we'll be having a celebratory toast thanks to Domain Chandon, and we'll be having some- Chandon, and we'll be having some enjoyable bites courtesy of Bouchon Bakery. It should be a very, you know, short but positive way to start the one-year anniversary celebration year, and we encourage everybody to come out and join us.
Thank you, yes. So 4:45, and we are going to try to take that photo right at 5 o'clock, because we will be losing sunlight rapidly at that point. I was gonna, since you brought it up, I'll invite our ad hoc committee members, councilmember Dorn Becker or councilmember Mueller, to speak to that, or if you feel like Steve's comments summed it all up?
Well, I think it's going to be a really fun event. I think that there's going to be a lot of people who are actually going to be able to come out and understand what we're trying to do this year, and really important to recognize the people who were very instrumental in getting us going 50 years ago. So I'm greatly looking forward to it, so it's always a good time to drink and eat cake.
And I want to recognize our Public Works Director, Joe Tagliabashi, and his very impressive crane operating skills that were instrumental in, in helping get the special artifact that now sits on display, about to be unveiled tomorrow in front of our community hall. It was quite a feat to watch the whole group bring that together and without incident. When we're moving a couple tons of, of stone, you never know.
Thanks, Mayor. It was a pleasure. I've been fortunate to do an awful lot of fun things in my life, but that's definitely one that I had never done, and it was, was, was an awful lot of fun. So we have a great staff, and it went really smooth, we were lucky. Thank you very much.
Sure.
I sense a joke, how many town staff does it take to move a millstone?
Well, I wasn't going to say what the artifact was, but...
It's been published.
I know, I'm just kidding. It was fairly public prior to us wrapping it up. No, there won't be that, that joke made. We had, it was a, an extensive team effort, I'll just say. All right, seeing no other, or hearing no other informational reports, we're going to move on to council meeting reports and comments. I do have several, but I'll wait until I hear if there are any other meeting reports from other council members. Councilmember Dorn Becker, please.
Yes, on, on January 22nd, I attended the Watershed Information and Conservation Committee meeting, and we had a drought update, and I don't, I hope that you can see this because this is pretty much the problem right now. The US drought monitor map, this is us here, and it's almost, you know, it's blood red. So we are still in a major drought, and I want to encourage everyone, despite the fact of what's coming up this weekend, I want you to know I'm not going to take credit for this, although I did pray for rain for my birthday, and we're getting it. It's coming. But that's still not even going to put us out of this drought, but we had a major presentation about drought. And then on January 27th, I attended the NCTPA Yountville Pedestrian Plan Meeting, and that was very interesting. We looked at a, a very interesting map of the town of Yountville and all the walking paths, and it was educational, and I, I'm glad that this is all being looked at, but the consensus seemed to be that we are a great town for walking, and I'm happy to relate that to everyone, as if you didn't know, that's why we love it here. And then on January 21st, I did attend the League of, League of California Cities North Bay Division Dinner, and we had a sort of, also interesting tax system presentation, and our, it was followed up by a very interesting article that our town manager sent to all of us, so we're all getting up to speed on what, what changes we should propose. Anyway, maybe. So it's been a busy time.
And I am deleting that meeting report off of my...
Oh, sorry.
...list right now. The, the city of Sonoma was gracious enough to host that dinner meeting. It was really, I wouldn't say it was uplifting information about the potential tax reform, but it was interesting. Any other meeting reports before I get into my list here?
Do you have NCTVA on your list?
I do, and...
It's all you.
Okay. If I leave out anything that you want to mention, just hit your button and see what happens.
No.
First up, the Napa County City Selection Board, which consists of all of the mayors in the county, in December made a recommendation to, for the Board of Supervisors to appoint Supervisor Mark Luce to the completion of the term vacated by now Assembly Member Bill Dodd with the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. And then the City Selection Committee in its January meeting made recommendations for the appointment of the full four-year term that starts next week. Supervisor Luce was one of three, along with Mayor Leon Garcia from American Canyon and myself, were the three nominees. And this morning, the Board of Supervisors voted to select Supervisor Luce to continue on in that role. So we look forward to Supervisor Luce representing all of us here in Napa County fairly and appropriately. So thank you to him for all the additional time that will be spent working with MTC. Also, town manager Steve Rogers and I extended probably to one of the longest meetings the LAFCO Board has had to sit through in sometime last night down in American Canyon, and the reason that the town manager and I attended was a, a second discussion on legal counsel representing the commission at LAFCO. And our concern has been that using Napa County's legal counsel is an inherent, either perceived or an inherent conflict of interest with one member of the commission having its own legal counsel representing all members. After a couple hours of, of discussion, it was agreed that the three firms that had responded to the RFP for that, that work service would be interviewed by the commission sometime this next month, and that they are strongly considering a hybrid model of using county counsel for very basic kind of non-specialized counsel, and then either using an outside firm for special land use issues that relate directly to LAFCO issues, or they may decide after interviewing these three firms that they, they want to go completely to a neutral, nonpartisan outside counsel for all, all legal services. So that's an ongoing conversation. We also addressed the commission about the proposed schedule for municipal service review and sphere of influence updates, because we are concerned that a cycle that is supposed to take five years, or every five years, each municipality is supposed to have the service review and sphere of influence update, we will be four and a half years late into that cycle before we're even receiving those services. So we were strongly recommending the commission review its scheduling and the way it does its business to try to expedite some of those issues. It impacts us with our general plan review in a very serious and direct way, so some of the delay is due to the fact they're continuing to search for a permanent executive director.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Did you mean that it's been nine and a half years since one's been done?
2008 was the last time our review was done.
We're almost to the five here.
Ours was due to be completed by 2013. By the time the schedule as it states now, we would not be complete with our next review until 2017.
Nice.
And we're, I mean, it's not like Yountville is special in that sense. Virtually their entire list of about a dozen special districts and municipalities have gone without this for almost three years now, so something needs to change in how they do their work. Also, Vice Mayor alluded to the Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency meeting where the board did approve a 10-cent fare increase. The principal reason for that was to allow the agency to comply with a 16% fare box recovery requirement that allows us to remain qualified, us being the whole transportation agency, remain qualified for state, state grant funding. We have been slightly below that required 16%, and so instead of cutting services or making other changes to the growingly successful service delivery, the decision was made to have this nominal fare increase to achieve that required recovery rate. I also met with all of the other mayors in Napa County, as well as Supervisor Dylan, who is the current chair of the Supervisors Board. We all met with the Napa Register Editorial Board and had a very amicable and informative dialogue about issues that impact all of us. It was interesting to hear how many issues were considered priorities in all of the cities, and in some cases even the county. So hopefully that will encourage additional dialogue as we deal with issues that affect all of us. A couple of other things I wanted you to just announce, I was contacted by Rex Stoltz of the, the government relations director of the Napa Valley Ventners Association, who read in our chamber newsletter about the reported theft of $800 from the Veterans Home Bingo cash boxes, and he called me to inform me, and I was able to put him in touch with our home administration, that the Ventners Association would like to present a check to the Veterans Home for the full $800. So plans are being put together to make a check presentation, and we're all going to be invited to participate in Bingo Night on whichever Saturday night they are able to, to do this. I also want to say hearty congratulations to Team USA in the, what is known as the Culinary Olympics. It is the largest and most prestigious culinary competition in the world, held in Lyon, France, and for the first time ever, Team USA, as they say, reached the podium. They finished second, led by our, our own French laundry chef, Philippe Tessier, and I hope I'm saying that right. They finished second place behind Norway, who won the gold in the Bocuse d'Or competition. Third place went to Sweden. So very impressive. 24 chefs representing five different continents participated, and this is a competition that happens every two years, and it's the highest finished Team USA has ever had, and one of our own led the way. So congratulations to all of them. Again, very impressive work. Those are all the reports and announcements I have. I do want to just reemphasize what town manager said tomorrow, 4:45 PM. I'm glad you, you recognized the PM in the afternoon. Thank you, Councilmember Dorn Becker, for postponing the rain to the end of the week, and we will, we encourage as many people as want to to come out and join us for this unique photo opportunity, and then the fun celebration afterwards. So one more step toward a great celebration. We will also be unveiling the...
Historic artifact.
The historic artifact from the Yount Mill...
Which may or may not be...
Which may or may not be really heavy grindstones. Okay, so with that, I think all of our business is done, except for closed session. There's one more comment, Councilmember Mueller?
Yes, I just wanted to make one more comment. On this coming Sunday, 2 o'clock at the community center is the part two of the four-part historical film series, and it will be a interview with Ray Monte. I would say that everybody from the Chamber of Commerce would want to be there. He was an early business owner. He's going to be talking about Yountville in the 60s. One time he owned V Marketplace, Bouchon Restaurant, Bouchon Bakery, and the Magnolia Hotel, which is now Maison Fleury. So he's got a lot of fabulous stories, and he tells them in a very fun, enjoyable way. So come out to the community center, February 8th at 2 o'clock to, to see the film.
Great, thank you very much. Seeing no other business, we have three closed session items on our agenda. Do we anticipate any reportable action?
No, Mr. Mayor, and actually, the, there is no further update on the SWANK matter. So we have two items, which is conference of labor negotiator and the existing litigation matter of Stewart Yountville Properties.
Very good. So then we'll adjourn to closed session, not expecting any reportable action. So just so folks know, earlier tonight, we agreed to cancel our February 17th meeting, so our next regular council meeting will be on March 3rd. So we will now go into closed session.